Hey down here, where's Mike Morton? Let's go ahead and call the regular meeting of the city of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for September 7th, 2023 to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. I'd like to remind anyone who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out a yellow comment card, those are on the table. And by the front door there, you hand them to the city attorney and we'll get called when it's time for those public comments. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight. Make sure that if you're commenting on one of those, that you designate that so that we call you at the right time. If you'd also please make sure that your cell phone is turned off. Seems like one person misses that every meeting. Sometimes it's me, so. But please do that. And if you would see him for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
Dana, we decided that scheduled thing was going to be next month, so there's no changes to the agenda, right?
Correct. I mean, we have, we were gonna postpone 20-03, the charter changed, so redo the wording. So do you wanna?
Now let's just go and do that now. City Attorney, because of some changes to the language, we need to take 23-030, and he's gonna bring in a new, a new version of that at the next meeting, but that takes two reads, so we'll go ahead and pull that out. Anything else anybody need changed? If not, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the amended meeting agenda?
Make a motion to approve the amended meeting agenda.
Motion in a second, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye. Agenda stands approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 1st and the special call meeting of August 8. Can I get a motion in a second to approve both sets of minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the August 1st and August 8th minutes.
A second?
We have a motion in a second. Anything anybody you need changed or added?
Nope.
If not, all those in favor of adopting those minutes, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Minutes stand approved. We have no presentations tonight. Next up is public comment, which is time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Again, we have a couple of public hearings, so be sure to specify when you turn your stuff into the city attorney. When your name's called, please come forward and speak into the microphone and directly to the council for stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have three. The first is Renee Prince.
Renee Prince, 13015 Hamilton Road. And tonight, I'm not gonna complain about anything. What I wanna do is say thank you. First of all, I wanna say thank you to Daryl. We had an issue, I guess you would call it a trench or whatever, over on Hamilton Road. And within two hours after calling him, it was taken care of and the guys did an awesome job and I really do appreciate your workers and all. And I wanna thank the police departments, the fire department for everything that you all do. I know I don't utilize you all as much as some of maybe some of the other citizens. Yes, absolutely. But, you know, and thank y'all so much and for the protection for our city and all. Our city council, I know the last couple of months or maybe the last six months, I've sent emails to you all. Thank y'all so much, Mayor, for responding back to me. I really do appreciate it. And also to the city, to Robbie and Mike and Katie and Dana. I know that I've requested some public records and stuff from you all the last six months. Thank y'all so much for getting those to me and stuff. And I wanna thank Troy Bettis. He is my city councilperson for my district. And I know he's taken a lot of heat the last four years because of sometimes maybe not being here and stuff like that. But I do appreciate everything that you do for the city. Thank you for taking my calls. Thank you for answering my questions and stuff like that. And just thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Renee.
Next is Deneen Crawford.
Deneen Crawford, 5575 Cochrane Mill Road. I just wanted to come up tonight and let everybody know that we, as the Chat Hill Citizens Alliance, had a town hall meeting on August 24th and it went very well. We had a great attendance. We discussed a lot of vital information. A lot of citizens came from every district. They were asking a lot of good questions. I did reach out to a couple of council people about answering those questions. And I'm sure that citizens have reached out to some of you to let you know how it went and possibly let you know what was discussed. I have talked to some of you. But it was a great turnout. It was a great information meeting and we hope to hold another one for information and for citizens. Also, we have a private citizen who has reached out for us to inform the citizens through our email blast about a meet and greet for all the council candidates that are up for election in November. And they have reserved Jordan's Ridge on September the 16th. It's a week from this Saturday at 3:00 PM. There's gonna be light snacks and a question and answers meeting. So we're gonna have note cards there for people that if, that don't wanna stand up and, and ask the hard questions or ask the questions. If they wanna write it down on a note card, we'll have someone to ask those questions to the candidates. So we just would like for you to come out and get to know the candidates a little bit better. And, and this citizen reached out to us to get that information out, so we're just getting it out for them. Also, I had an email through the info at Chat Hills about the Citizens Alliance campaigning for certain candidates. And we know as a 501(c)(3) that we're not allowed to do that. To campaign for, you know, certain candidates, but we also know that as private citizens, we can go door to door and campaign for any citizen as long as we're not saying that we're affiliated with the alliance during that time. We also, I also saw on here, we're talking about garbage pickup, you know, and possible bidding for that. I think that's a wonderful idea. I know citizens have been concerned about that. And just having consistency for the garbage pickup, but I know that we have a lot of elderly people in our community. And I know that some of the services that are out here right now give a senior discount, so I hope that you guys will include that in the contract bidding for our senior citizens out here. So thank you very much for your time and everything that you do. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Deneen.
Next is Scott Schaefer.
Hey, good evening. Scott Schaefer, 9905 Rivertown Road. And I'll reiterate, I thanks for, for all you guys do. Thanks for our, our new police chief and fire department doing a good job. And Daryl, you're including that. Where is he?
Right there. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Stand up. Okay, so just a minor comment, but I've heard it from a number of other people, so that's why I thought I'd come up and just say it. I'm at the corner of Cochrane Mill and Rivertown Road. I got about a half a mile of frontage. And about a month ago, spent a lot of time cleaning up from a six-foot brush cutter, cutting five-foot trees. And it, it makes a mess everywhere. We're throwing it everywhere. So that, I think that was brought up to council before. And Daryl maybe made some corrective actions there. Just in the last couple of weeks, I think we've had grader, a full-size grader, going and trying to take off six inches of grass on the road sides. I, I wouldn't say that's the right tool for the job. And it threw it all over our road sides that people are really kinda upset with that. Cause you, we can't use our own lawnmowers right now to keep and maintain that property that's in the right of way that we have in for years. Cause now there's just chunks of everything and asphalt, stones. So we have to go and clean up what, what has happened. So I would just encourage Daryl, if you need more equipment, hit these guys up for the right tool, for the right job. It's two examples in a row where, you know, we've had to go and spend our time when we're trying to help you. I mean, by maintaining the roadside ourselves. But that's two strikes, man. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. All right. Next up are our staff reports, and we'll start with a financial update from the city manager, Robbie.
One page. Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. I feel like I've seen you all day today. Since you've been here since too. Good evening, staff and citizens. Thank you all for coming. I just want to report, welcome to September. 109 days until Christmas, in case anybody's counting.
That's, I didn't wanna know that.
I said that because, you know, the finance report's gonna be short. We're 16.7% through the fiscal year. We're just starting the fiscal year. And the good news is, even though I've been using this for years, don't you, you probably don't have to get used to seeing this anymore, cause we got new software. It's in the process rolling out, so it's a budgeting software, so it's gonna be a lot better. And it's gonna be probably a lot easier to read than this as well. But, you know, the top part, as you know, is the revenues and revenues are coming in kinda slow that we have. Fund balance stays the same, but you know, things will trickle in. We don't have any property taxes in, but we get low flops and sales tax, as you see, coming in and fines and forfeitures. But, you know, we're just barely through the fiscal year. Expenditures about the same, you know, fund balance with the T-Spot and the in the hotel motel funds remain the same, and we're getting a little bit of money in for that. T-Spot, you see there, it's gonna go away. As I reported, you know, some of the citizens were here during work session, but you're talking, we got phase one going on right now. As Mr. Schaefer was talking about, that's part of the process. They're scraping the roads and such, and that's all gonna be repaired as part of the project. But phase two is gonna be RICO Road, and that's gonna be bid out. But we're talking about $3 million, close to $3 million T-Spot project, largest road project that we've done for the city since the city's been here. And that's paid for using T-Spot dollars and money that the city council has been, been putting away in order to do this big, large project. So that's going forward, but that's why you see the fund balance the way it is. The expenditures are what they are, you know, through the year. You'll see things that stand out, that come out, you know, in happier chunks like risk management kinda deal. So that's, it doesn't, it's not like we're, we're over budget when we're 51% of the budget. But it's, I'm sorry, I'm not 51, but 31 or 53, 53, 353, I'm looking at the wrong line for our non-departmental insurance. You know, we have, we're not, I know we're not 53% through the fiscal year, but when you see something like that, it's because we, we pay it, you know, twice a year. But our financial reporting is gonna be a little bit better than we have. It's gonna break that out a little bit easier for us to see. But long story short, I mean, we're doing good with our finances. We're, you know, 10% through general fund expenditures and our revenues are are, you know, around 7.2% of what we've collected. So, I'm sorry, 7.2% is our expenditure, 71% of our revenues, but that includes our fund balance. But again, it's, it's hard to report on not much happening, cause we don't have many revenues coming in. But I'm here to answer any questions about financials or any other questions anybody might have at this time for administration department.
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Robbie. Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Mayor, council, citizens, and friends. The printed report indicates our statistics for the month of August. And I wanna give you some adjustments to those numbers if you're tracking them very carefully. The incident total for 20, for August is actually 63 over to your extreme left there, and year-to-date would then be 328. And we had a total of 24 EMS incidents. Just to give you that, I'll give it back to you at the end of the year, or just after the first end of the year, you can look at it in a different way. I wanted to bring to you a word of personal thanks from all my fire and EMS personnel. You approved for a rate change. And I would say, and, and Chief McCarragher, I think, would, would bear this out as well, that we just saw so much, heard so much from them and are seeing so much change in, in them. And I, I know they've always been grateful to work for this city and for the job. But for, for them to see a demonstration of appreciation from you and the citizens where they are no longer at the bottom of the ladder compared to all the other departments around us is an extraordinary thing, and they know that. And so I bring to you, thank you. I mean, a deep heartfelt thank you. They, they notice it. I'm glad to tell you that because of that, we caught the attention of some outsiders and filled in some gaps. And so we've added three new paramedics. We love to have those advanced life-saving skills in the paramedics and added an additional EMT advance. So we are firm with three fire officers now over the A, B, and C ship. Feeling very good about that. I wanna tell you somebody that I feel really good about, and I wanna be a little personal with you for a minute. Some of you know that my mother passed two weeks ago today. On the day that my dad, my mother passed, I had to, I was on my way to Grady to explain to my dad, who was in Grady, that he had stage, has stage four urotheliocarcinoma inoperable. And a relatively short amount of time to live. And I had to tell him that my mom had passed that same day earlier. That's a lot. That's a lot. I was able to step away from all of this without any concern because of the support from a city manager who said, go, your family is important, go deal with that. But the operational stuff of the fire department, EMS and so forth, went to this guy. Pat McCarragher, a veteran of 35 years in the fire service. As our commercial properties plan review, everything that comes to this city, you understand, we touch. And he reviews that along with me. The event and venue applications reviewed, and then the venues inspected. Fire and arson investigations, the operational stuff, day-to-day, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. It's his. And then the personnel staffing. So I, I wanna tell you how much, how important it is to have someone like Pat McCarragher. And I couldn't have been able to step away the way I did or continue to do without somebody like him. So I say thank you to Pat, but I say thank you that I have such a great person to back me up. The photo on the, on the printed report there of the guys in the fire gear, that is the accident that we worked a week ago with Police Chief Degoo talked, spoke of it a little bit earlier. That's a that was a pretty, pretty bad trauma situation, requiring hydraulics to cut that patient from the car. And so we're, we're mindful at times that as our, as we're growing, we have a lot of people coming into our city. We're adding, adding residents. But we're also having a lot of through travelers and many of our, many of our incidents on the roadways have to do with through travelers, not actually residents. Finally, on Monday, 22 years ago, our nation was attacked. And some will remember and some won't, but I want you to know that we will remember. And we'll memorialize that event on Monday morning, 9/11 at 9 o'clock. If you're, wanna come by the station, okay. But if, wherever you are, you'll just stop for a minute and reflect on what that day meant and those who gave, gave their lives for that. We will roll our fire units out onto the ramp and we'll lower the flag to have staff gather as a group and we'll run the alarm up really high and long and loud. And that'll be our observance of 9/11. Finally, a burn ban lifted, so pass along the instructions. And let's hope everybody can comply. You know, on, I think the little story there on the flip side at the top answers for itself. Someone asked, what, what happens if we have something like the fire incident event occurring in Lahaina, Hawaii? And I was really glad to be able to communicate to one of our council members that all of that's accounted for already under strategies and tactics in our disaster management plan. I'm not gonna say I have all the people and all the equipment to do something like that, but we have a plan that can, that we could put into motion and, and call in those resources. So that's my report. If you have a question, I'll try and answer.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna say a prayer for you, buddy.
Thank you.
Cause that's a lot.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna make a comment to that, that question about the, you know, what would happen if there was a fire here? Of course, the second we asked Greg, keep all the plan off the shelf and said, oh yeah, we've got a plan. We've worked it out. We've talked to all the neighboring jurisdictions. We know what we would have to do. And to the point he was making about the backup, he have, we, I would put our leadership here in our departments up against any city much larger than us around us. And we really have thought of all of those things. It's just always impressive to me. Greg also mentioned the accident on South Fulton Parkway. In the wake of that, it's just another one of the accidents that we've had on the Parkway at the intersections. You know, people have been here for a while, have heard of many of those. And there's a escalating conversation going on right now, because we've had conversations with GDOT about things that we'd like them to do to improve safety in those roads that have been basically ignored. But now we've drawn in several of the local jurisdictions around us into that conversation. The Fulton County School Superintendent is in that conversation. Our local state senator and state representative are in that conversation. And so there's a real escalation around the idea of maybe some of those safety issues being addressed. So again, you know, in part because of the work that Greg does and also just the fact that city manager has stepped in and just had a lot of effort going on around that. So as always, thank you for that. Next up is a police department report from Chief Degoo.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens. I'm just gonna ask that maybe next month I get to go after Robbie, cause that's kinda hard to follow up with. Now, you have the stats for, for this month. Kind of a slower month than, than what we've had. We talked about the accidents. One thing I wanna, I wanna touch on is a couple of months ago and last month, I talked about Corporal Carter going to the CIT training. He completed that. I've been to it. He now has been to it. And in conversations with him, what I'm gonna start doing next year is, is I'm gonna require all of the, the entire department to go to CIT training. They have opened up classes around us. South Fulton's gonna host one. Fulton County's gonna host one. Douglas Carroll, Carroll, Carrollton? Carrollton's gonna host one. So I feel confident we can have the entire department CIT certified.
Kevin, remind people what CIT stands for.
It's Crisis Intervention Training. It is dealing specifically with people that are having a mental health crisis. And it's a 40-hour class. It is a very intense, it's very scenario-based. And it's, it's a wonderful class, so I'm gonna require the entire department be CIT certified, starting, starting next year. Our new detective starts on Monday. His name is Richard Stein. He comes from, he was the chief deputy for the Fulton County District Attorney's Office. And I snagged him away from her because she took one of my officers. So anyway, he, before there, he was at Habersham County. He's, has several instructor certifications specifically dealing with crimes against children and elderly abuse and things like that. So he's gonna be a wonderful addition, plus other things that he brings to the, to the table. Speaking of that, Officer Dorsett did resign, and he's now at the Fulton County District Attorney's Office. So that leaves us with two open again. We almost had them all filled, but the applications that we had last month, none of them passed our background. So I've reopened it and we have, we've sent out 11 applications to interested people that have reached out saying that they wanna work here. And so, yeah, anyway, so hopefully in the next month or so, we'll be able to fill those last two positions. Any questions for me?
Do we have any part-time officers that fill in some of the gaps?
So we, we have one part-time officer, and that's Jason Leach. And he does fill in, he, he, his work schedule with what he does. He comes in when he, when he can, and he'll usually come in for like, he'll work on the weekends for like maybe two months in a row, and then he travels for his job for a while, and then he goes back. The other reserve officers that we have are only for our court. So, yeah, he's the only part-time officer we have at the moment.
People working extra shifts right now.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. Next up is a public works report from our Public Works and Parks Director, Daryl Blinland.
So Blinland or Wanlit?
That's me. Hello, guys. Mayor and council. Beautiful residents of Chattahoochee Hills. As Greg mentioned earlier, the, everything that, that, that goes through the city development, whatever is events, filming, we touch it. Greg looks at it, his department, I look at it, planning looks at, we meet. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that a lot of people don't realize that we have to do, because you adopt ordinances, policies, procedures and stuff that we have to apply. And my wife says, man, y'all meet a lot. We do meet a lot. And that's, and that's good, because without structure and our guidance, people would just do whatever. And we depend on y'all to lead us, and we enforce what y'all apply every day. It's a lot. You know, we got a lot of development going on in the city, a lot of roads being built and a lot of upcoming things in the city, as in the T-Spot project that we've kicked off, as a resident was saying about clipping the shoulders. And it's one time I can say it wasn't my guys, thank goodness. That's, that's what the contractors use. They use a motor grader to clip shoulders. Like Robbie said, their job is, when they get done, is to come back and clean it up. They don't, we will. But this is a minor little inconvenience for a big project that we push so hard for. I've been here this seven and a half years now. And we started off with some horrible roads, and we've spent a lot of money patching, sealing, and doing what we've done. So now here we are. Seven and a half years later, we're topping and fixing roads. And I'm, I'm excited, thankful to be part of what we've done and the support that you give us to be able to get to this point. I mean, I'm really excited about what's fixing to happen. We're getting a lot of miles paved, this, this T-Spot project town. Let me see. Oh, as in that T-Spot, if anybody wants to know, they're gonna be starting on Hutchison Ferry. We're gonna go all the way through Hutchison Ferry. That's gonna be the first, and then move on to Rivertown, Cochrane Mill. That's the two, two projects. Also, like Robbie said again, that we are looking at another bid proposal for RICO. The process, the stuff that we're using this time is a new, new, new to us. It's been out for many years. It's getting more bang for our buck. But RICO is in such bad shape that we can't use this material here. We're gonna have to do some deeper repairs. We've done some repairs in the past that you see, but you can see on that where we didn't do repairs, that's coming apart. So we're working on that to get that road taken care of. Once we do, they'll get a lot of roads taken care of in this project. Last thing is tomorrow, I don't know if anybody's gonna say, I don't wanna step on nobody's toes, but, but tomorrow at 2:00, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting ceremony at the Riverlands Park. There's been a lot of trust for public land, a lot of volunteers, a lot of work that's been done over in our park for the future. And it's, they're doing it for free. And they, when they first started, they was gonna be here once or twice. And it seems like every other day, they're calling me, say, hey, we're gonna go, be out there again. We're gonna be out there again. And I go out there and look at the work they've done, which saves us so much, cause my staff is so small. Without them doing, we would nowhere near. And the volunteers that we have in our park, we would, we would not be where we are without the volunteers and the, and the stuff that we've got. That's all I have. I know it's probably a lot more than I usually like to say. But do you have any questions for me? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Gerald. Next up is a community development report from Director Mike Morton.
Mayor and council, it'll be brief. You have in front of you, again, the building permit activity. 15 total permits versus 18 a year ago, four for new houses versus three a year ago. So right in the same neighborhood. Planning commission meeting would have been this coming Thursday. Don't have anything for the agenda, so we don't expect to be meeting it. Actually, don't have final confirmation from the chair yet, but I don't expect we'll be meeting next week. As I've mentioned in previous months, I have applications in for two projects that are currently going through the DRI process. One is a village. 525 acres on Cochrane Mill Road is South Fulton Parkway. The other one is a mixed-use hamlet, Cochrane Mill Road, sort of north end of the city. The other one is a mixed use Hamlet, uh, Cochrane Mill Road, uh, sort of north end of the city. Um, uh, two hundred and sixty-five or so acres. Um, also have heard from, uh, another. Uh, property owner, um, about a mixed use Hamlet application that I'm expecting to receive over the course of the next month. You'll probably have. First read, uh, beginning of the following month, not, uh, uh, not October, but, but November. Uh, mixed use Hamlet on two hundred and ten acres, little south of the Parkway on Hamilton Redwine Road. Um, uh, and, uh, that's all I have. Any questions?
We'll see you again momentarily. All right, that's it for staff reports. Next up are our public hearings. Uh, we have a couple of those tonight. Uh, first up is public hearing in action on a rezoning of a hundred and seventeen acres. Um, to HMR. And. Mike, before you, do you have public comments on those?
We do not.
Okay, so rather than read all the rules for those, I'm gonna open the public here and on those. I, I get it, but we can let them speak without. Would you like to explain this one to us, please, and then we'll do the public? I'm just trying to move the world along.
Uh, the application, as you know, is for a hundred and seventeen acres, um, between Cochrane Mill Road and Cascade Palmetto Highway. Um, uh, it would be a, um, an expansion of an existing residential Hamlet district, um, just to the south of it. Um, which is phase two of Cedar Grove, or the estates of Cedar Grove, um, which is the back part of. The neighborhood that was built, uh, originally built under Fulton County, you know, houses being built until now. Um, and, uh, so that would in- increase the district size to a hundred and six point four four acres. Um, uh, the rezoning of that Cedar Grove Estates took place about a year, almost exactly a year ago, almost to the day. Um, in the meantime, um, City Council has approved a couple of, uh, uh, special use permits. For the subject property, the hundred and seventy acres under application, uh, for tonight's hearing, um, for a country inn and a special event center. And this is the same property with an additional, uh, I should remember how many acres, sixteen or so, I think acre, not sixteen acres. Addition, a little bit of additional land. They picked up some property in the meantime. So this, this includes a little more property than the, those special use permits, um, uh, included. Um, largely because of the special use permits, um, there's also an application for. A variance to increase the amount of the developable area in the district. They can be used for non-residential uses. Um, this would accommodate, when they got the special use permits, they didn't have any sort of restrictions on how much of that hundred and, uh, so, a hundred or so acres could be used. For it and, um, in the residential Hamlet, they would really only be allowed to use a little over an acre. Um, for those purposes, but the plans and what was approved really take up a little more land than that. It also give them an opportunity to have a, um. Little community center in there and, and potentially a little bit more, um, uh, service retail or, or something along those lines. Um, if the rezoning is approved, um, the expansion of the existing residential Hamlet district. Would, um, bring that district into conformity. If you remember, there were a couple of variances for that one, including, um, minimum district size. And, uh, the amount of, uh, open space preservation that could take place offsite. Um, uh, with the addition of the proposed property, uh, those numbers would come into conformance with the regular, um, the, the regular rules. So, um, that would be improvement and the, um, uh, there are a couple of, uh, uh, a, a couple of other benefits. Um, they'll be able to link, uh, networks together. Um, they've already talked about, uh, uh, water supply. Um, and, uh, we have a proposed condition for, um, uh, to, uh, to connect the roads. Um, the, the approval of the existing district includes a corridor for a potential connection. Um, the proposal includes a, um, a cul-de-sac that basically ends very near where that corridor comes out. The condition would have them connect those. So each district then would gain additional entrances, additional flexibility, pull more traffic off of the, um. Uh, outside road network and, uh, put it inside the district. Um, uh, it also would provide the existing district a little bit of flexibility with their, um. Uh, buffers. They wouldn't be required to have that buffer in the back. Um, of course, any, any major change would require a concept plan change. Um, but it gives them a little bit of flexibility if they wanted to, uh, move pieces around just a little bit there. Um, and, uh, uh, the planning commission held a public hearing earlier in the month. And the vote was, um, uh, four to, four to zero recommending approval. Uh, with conditions, they added one condition, the last condition on the, the list of conditions, plus there was one, um, condition of their. Recommendation. So not something that gets passed along to the developer, but, uh, I can read that because there were some concerns about. Um, uh, the way it was presented, um, there, that last rec, uh, condition is resolution. To the satisfaction of City Council of the limitation in the unified development code, section six one B dot one. That, and I'll get to this in a, in a second, I'll respond to this. No part of any residential Hamlet district shall be within five hundred feet of another residential Hamlet, HMR district. As measured in a straight line. Such resolution shall be subject to the advice of the city attorney. Recalibration by staff as necessary of open space and land use ratio and other relevant requirements for the expanded district. And satisfactory coordination between the adjacent property owner and the estates of Cedar Grove and the applicant. So there are several things packed in there. I'm happy to go through them. Um, the code, uh, doesn't allow two residential hamlets to be within five hundred feet of each other because we have a limit on the maximum size of a residential hamlet. As an expansion, they don't exceed that maximum size. Um, so that's acceptable. Um, did run this by, um, Rick Lindsay. And, um, he said that this was, um, this was, this was not a problem. Um, that's part of the reference of, um, satisfaction of the, uh, of the city attorney. Um, recalculating by sta- recalculation by staff as necessary of open space and land use ratio and other relevant requirements for the expanded district. That appears here in the memo, um, all the numbers based on the expanded district are, um, are in the memo under discussion. Under the, the subhead of an expanded district that's right there in the middle of, of page two. Um, and again, the expanded district meets. All of those, uh, all of those requirements. And then, uh, let's see, finally, um. Uh, recalculation by staff, it's just satisfactory coordination between adjacent property owner and the states that you grow back again. So, um, had a couple of conversations with, uh, James Nicholson of the Estates to Cedar Grove, Jeff Lindsay Communities. Who owns the Estates of Cedar Grove, thought he was gonna be here this evening. I actually called him between the meetings. Um, and he actually is on the way to a, a funeral of a, a relative of a friend of his, so he's not gonna be able to be here, but I did confirm with him. Um, uh, well, in a previous conversation, I talked about the coordination, the road connection, the water connection that the applicant began the conversation with. And, uh, in this conversation confirmed with him his position on this. I said. Is it, because he had said before that he was in support. I said, is it support? Is it not objecting? He said, no, I support it. So. That's again verbal, you're getting it secondhand, but I, I had that conversation again today. So, um, uh, that, uh, that is also, um, in line. Satisfying what the planning commission wanted to see i- in order for them to give a positive recommendation on this.
Great, thanks, Mike. All right, so now. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. You can do the abbreviated version if we don't have any against. Um, but please, the public hearing rules.
All right, public hearing procedures for zoning hearings, procedure statement, Chattahoochee Hills. The mayor will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for this public hearing. You desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city attorney. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that speaker cards were received by the city attorney. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization applicable for beginning their presentation. In this case, each side will have ten minutes to present their case. The applicant and all those speaking in support of the application will speak first. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue will speak next. Any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Following the presentations by the applicant, those speaking in support of the application and opposing the application. The city staff shall present their motion. City clerk will keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time has expired. During the public hearing, members of the city council shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the public hearing complete. In addition, the applicant shall not submit new material to the city council during the meeting unless requested to do so by a council member. All material which the applicant wishes to be considered shall be submitted to the city planner prior to the meeting. So that the material may be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. Finally, in a rezoning matter, the applicant and any person who desires to speak during the public hearing. Who has contributed campaign contributions totaling two hundred and fifty dollars or more to any member of the mayor, council. Uh, he or she shall disclose such contributions prior to speaking during the public hearing. Failure to disclose such campaign contributions constitutes a misdemeanor.
Can see why I'm always trying to shorten this process. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, we have no cards there. Raj, you are welcome to say something if you would like. No requirement. Uh, all right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to the conversation part of this and. Did we lose story? Feel like we should wait till the whole councils here. Where did you go? No, that's fair enough, fair enough. Well, let's go ahead. Yeah, if I can get a motion in a second, please. Uh, on twenty-three dash oh three four, uh, we can start our discussion on it.
Like motion on twenty-three dash oh three four.
Hang on one second, sorry. Move to approve twenty-one or twenty-three dash oh three four with the conditions recommended by the planning commission. So can you just do that again with the conditions? Please.
A move to, sorry, has twenty-three dash oh four with the recommendations from planning commission. Need something else?
We got a second though, that's good.
All right, Ruby, get a second.
Anybody, a second.
I second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, but let's, uh, talk about this. Anybody has any questions, concerns? We've got the applicant here. We've got Mike here to answer any possible questions.
Now, like I said in the workshop, Mike, I think you found a good solution to a, a, a problem. And I'm sure the applicant appreciates it and I'm sure the, uh, other community does too. Thank you.
Yes, if not, uh, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh three four with the conditions, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Congratulations. Next up, and we'll take these two together because they're basically the same issue on two different properties. Uh, the MRPA, uh, requirements for a public hearing. Mike, if you'd please describe that to us. It's twenty-three dash oh three five and twenty-three dash oh three six.
Um, very briefly, this, uh, this follows the Riverlands project. The proposal is to build. Uh, camp and paddle trails and two of, uh, of the city parks, Hamilton Park and the new Riverlands Park. And, uh, because the development for those, uh, projects, including bathroom and, uh, launch and some, uh, uh, trails. Uh, parking lots, um, is in the two thousand foot wide MRPA corridor. MRPA being Metropolitan River Protection Act. Requires review by the local regional commission, um, uh, to, uh, determine whether it's. Whether the proposal is consistent with the, uh, the corridor plan. And, uh, we received the results of that review. Um, both are found by them to be consistent with the plan. Um, the MRPA rules say that the city council needs to confirm their finding before the city issues permits. Which in this case would be land disturbance permits and the building permits for the bathroom buildings. So, um, you are being asked to, um, confirm that finding. That the project is consistent with the corridor rules.
Great, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on both, uh, twenty-three dash oh three five and twenty-three dash oh three six. Do we have any comments? Well, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, next I would like a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh three five and twenty-three dash oh three six.
Make the motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh three five and twenty-three dash oh three six. A second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? I'll just say this is, uh, again, this is kind of reform a legal requirement because of the Metropolitan River Protection Act. Uh, and it is another opportunity to celebrate the fact that the Trust for Public Land has given us a bunch of money to build these pavilions and bathrooms at both of those parks. Uh, which we will be celebrating with a grand opening tomorrow. So please come to that. Uh, and, uh, with that in mind, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh three five and oh three six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Uh, next we have a couple of items of unfinished business. The first of those is twenty-three dash oh two six, which is an IGA with the Chethill CBB. To direct hotel motel taxes for proposed Airbnb hotels, uh, as permitted by statute. Um, Garnet, you wanna? Talk about that? You're probably the best positioned.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'll be brief as we, uh, spoke in detail just. Two hours ago in your marathon Thursday. Um, this ask is for, uh. Through the city, like through the city with, in partnership with the city and CBB, an allocation of seven of the eight percent. So seven percent total of the hotel motel tax for two hotels within Saranby, the Selborn Hotel. And the Motto Destination Spa Hotel. Um, this incentive, as I mentioned earlier today, is a very standard incentive. Uh, that municipalities use, um, as really a carrot, if you will, to help the projects occur where they otherwise. Uh, would not be able to, as you all heard from both, uh, John Davis and Lance earlier today, financing out and, uh. World for commercial projects and specifically hotels is challenging at best. Um, and this incentive is, is what is needed to help get that financial package. Um, to a point where we can take it to market and make these, um, hotels viable. Um, upon making the hotels viable, I think the biggest thing, um, that is just a win for the city, right? As I mentioned earlier today, both sites sit on land that's currently paying four hundred dollars a year in taxes. Um, over the course of fifteen years, it's estimated to be approximately a hundred and thirty million dollars of additional tax revenue that comes into the city. That would not otherwise happen. And that tax revenue doesn't replace residential that we're gonna do, right? It is truly additive. Uh, to Saranby's residential and current plan. Uh, this feels like an absolute win-win, uh, for you all as council members in terms of budget. Uh, dollars to have, um, and as they are uses in an already, um, existing Hamlet, right? It doesn't add from a footprint standpoint. Um, and the one additional item that I'll add for anyone in the audience and listening, but that said earlier. Um, all of the infrastructure costs born to bring this, these projects forward will be. Uh, borne by us as Saranby a private developer. So there's not any additional assistance, uh, that we will be asking for and from the city in terms of. Um, wastewater connection, road infrastructure, um, or permit fees, right? We'll be paying permit fees in full so that all of these, um, awesome staff people can continue to do what they're doing. And we'll be purchasing a fire truck for the city, right? Um, so excited to, to be here at the point with these projects that we're making this ask so that we can go to market. And bring the projects to fruition.
Thanks, Garnet. Uh, let's get a motion in a second so we can talk about this a little bit. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh two six?
Motion to adopt item twenty-three dash oh two six.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds, whichever one you heard first. Um, I just wanna make a couple of points too. We talked about this in the previous meeting, but there's been some confusion, I think, uh, in some of the conversations I've seen. Outside of the room. The only money that we're talking about, the only tax money that we're talking about is from these hotels and it only exists if these hotels are built. This doesn't affect. Tax revenues coming in from any other hotels. Um, and, and again, it doesn't exist unless these are built. Uh, Fulton County, uh, has also added into this pot their share of the property taxes. In recognition of the fact that there hasn't been a project of this kind of quality done south of the airport ever. And there are no comps for this sort of thing. It's not an easy thing to fundraise for. So this is the kind of thing that, that aligns with. What we're doing in Chattahoochee Hills, but doesn't exist without this kind of incentive. And the last piece of it is the, the little piece of taxes that we're giving up. Uh, we get back basically ten to one, uh, over the course of time in property taxes that we start getting the day they're built and then. Hotel motel taxes, both the, the one percent that we're keeping in the short term and then the full amount in the long term. Any other questions or concerns, anybody else? No, if not.
What is the comment? Um, one other thing you left off, uh. People had some concern over future hotels and development, whether we would have to be obligated if this set any kind of precedent. And, uh, Rick Lindsay, our attorney, said, no, each, each development is based on its own application. This does not obligate us in any way. And there was also a good bit of discussion in the work session about, uh. What the property tax revenue could, how the property tax revenue could benefit the city. Earlier than fifteen years. So as the property builds out, we'll start collecting quite a bit more. And we talked about, uh, several ideas that the future council will discuss, but you know. Tangible benefits even to the rural community and Saranby was very excited about doing that, potentially could. Fund the TDR bank so the city could start purchasing some of these properties that are at risk. And permanently preserving the corridors, um, in our rural area. You could potentially, uh, apply some of those funds to our historic properties that we haven't been able to repair or preserve. So there's, you know, a lot of benefits, um, citywide that this, this project could offer. And I just wanted to. So there's, you know, a lot of benefits, um, citywide that this, this project could offer. And I just wanted to share that.
If not, um, let's go ahead and call this one, uh, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh two six, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. That stands adopted unanimously. Uh, we had skipped over, uh, twenty-three dash oh three, oh three oh in the, in the agenda review. So next up are several new business items. The first of those is the, um, twenty-three dash oh three seven, which is, uh, again, a technical point. Uh, the city attorney asked us to adopt about process serving who's. Are you gonna talk about that in his absence? Cause he talked about that.
I mean, I can a little bit.
Oh yeah, I just, I mean, the briefest summary, we, we talked about it at.
Just like any corporation, uh, in the state of Georgia, you have to have a registered agent for the service to. Process, which means when you get sued, Robbie's gonna get the papers.
And we decided that we didn't want it to be me, so, uh, we are nominating the city manager for that.
Correct.
Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh three seven?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh three seven.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion about this one? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh three seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-three dash oh three eight. Dana, you wanna talk to us about that one?
Um, sure. So our current business license ordinance requires all businesses. To get, um, an occupational tax certificate or a business license. There are some exceptions like nonprofits, farm, certain farm businesses, that sort of thing. What this ordinance does is it would exempt these hobby type businesses, smaller businesses that are. Earning less than twenty-five hundred dollars would be exempt and not required to get a business license.
Thanks, Dana. All right, uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh three eight?
I make a motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh three eight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, this came up in the context of some of the events that we have, where we've got craft vendors and people like that coming in. It just seemed like an owner's burden for people to have to have a business license just to come support a city event. Um. So this is a, I think, a. Really easy thing for us that way. All those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh three eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-three dash oh three nine, which is in word contract for the Public Works Building. Robbie, Daryl, both of you.
Good evening, good, Mayor Council, as much as, uh, Daryl misses. Being at Fort Bragg and leaning to. With Public Works Building, we, uh, we got, we got RP, uh, we put out for a new Public Works Building that we talked about for several years. And, uh, it's, it's back in the public works yard and we, we put that out for bid. We. Got a lot of, uh, we had pre-bid conference with the folks, a lot of different bidders, like the five bidders and the, uh. The cost range, um, lowest bid was four nineteen, two thirty-four, highest was nine nine eight, uh, not even they even tried. Uh, with none of that was kicked out for being too high. And the others also around, and the fours mid-fours, one was a little bit over five, but that's for, um. That's for basically a sixty by a hundred square foot public works building. And Daryl will go into the details, what including that building. I know we heard it during the work session, but there's a lot of new people, citizens. Might be interested in, in what that, what that's about. Um, but it was a, it was a Georgia procurement registry bid project that we put out. And so it was a sealed bid project and had to come in and had pre-bid conference. We went over and we did seal bid opening and this lowest bid, we had to go make sure that. It was a lowest responsive and responsible bidder and they met all the qualifications of bonding and insurance and all that kind of stuff. So, um, so there, that's where we're at.
Yeah, you have any questions?
Let me, let me go ahead and get a motion and we can, we can have them ask whatever questions they would like. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh three nine?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-three dash zero three nine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, anybody have any questions for Daryl, your comments?
No, I know we've been talking about it for a long time.
Thank you, I appreciate it, ma'am. I do like to, uh, protect the equipment, you know, I'm a big fan of, um, buying new stuff. It does need to be protected. I do think the price is. Absolutely stupid, but we do need it. Yeah. Yeah, we, we. One thing I bought a beach house last week cheaper than that. I need to go, I need to go shop.
Beaches, uh.
No, I'll show you to him, you can buy. I got you. Well, good thing about this bid that we, we had it drawn up. And we had no influence in it. So that's a good thing that we sent it out and that's what we got. It's the best we got.
Daryl, um, thank you for getting the quotes. I know it's hard trying to get people out because it's take up their time. And it costs money as well. So appreciate all the posts that you received.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill's kind of thing. Not all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh three nine, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Sorry.
And just by the way, the, the representative for DCW is here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Built us a heck of a house.
And, and, and leave that contingency alone, all right? All right, um, next up is twenty-three dash oh four, which is a change order in the T-Splas project. Robbie, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor Council, you approved, uh, the T-Splas Phase One, uh, and that's underway. The project's underway. They're doing some work out there now. That's a micro surfing. Micro surfacing portion of the bid. And, uh, they went out and did some more, our engineer, as well as the engineers that worked with the asphalt company, uh, went out and said, oh, man, we're gonna need a little bit more materials because. There's more need than was for suspected. So that's the tune about two hundred and one thousand dollars. So as opposed to going down the road and saying, oh, we're already out of the gate. This is how much we know how much it's gonna cost. So we're coming back to you and adding two hundred and one thousand dollars to the, to the bid. It's one point one now. So. Has to be about one point three. It's what we estimated to begin with, but, uh, anyway, it comes out okay. Just for the edification of the phase two, so the audience knows as well, phase two is gonna be Rico Road, and that's different because it's a full depth reclamation, because there needs more work on Rico Road. Uh, so that bid's out right now, September twenty-first, gonna be opening of that. So we'll come back to you in October. For that, and so that'll be enough. I'm not gonna say how much that's gonna be because we don't know and it's up to the bidders to, to estimate that. I don't wanna, you know, give away. What we think it's gonna be, but we've estimated all along that this is gonna be three million dollar T-Splas project. And it's a combination of the T-Splas money that comes in because of these plus the second version passed and also because of this mayor council. Who have been socking money away to do this very big, large project, lot, largest T-Splas project that we've done. Uh, you're gonna see a big, big difference in the roadways. They're gonna be micro surface, they're gonna be pretty, they're gonna be striped. Um, it's gonna be smooth. So, um, so to give people on hushes of area, you'll go a little bit quicker, so be ready for that.
It is one of those things too, you know, it's, it's interesting how, how things are different now than they might have been ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. All of these projects are now done by multiple teams.
Yes.
And so you get this thing where they're out, you know, clipping edges weeks before they're doing some other thing and they're leaving the front yard ugly and we apologize to citizens for the fact that that's just how it works now. It's like when, uh, the Greystone folks are putting in the fiber. You know, you've got people out trimming bushes and then other people are coming by two weeks later to pick up what they trimmed. And in the meantime, it's ugly and it's just the way they're doing it now. And, and again, our apologies for the mess in the middle and I'm just hoping that the outcomes are worse for the, the mess in the middle for everybody.
What beautiful thing you guys did is this is a temporary bump.
Yeah.
It's gonna last this long or a long time before.
But I, I get that it's a pain in the butt for people in the moment. So, yeah, again, don't, don't like that. Make it a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh four oh, which is that T-Splas update.
Make a motion to adopt twenty-three oh four oh.
I second.
Uh, any other conversation about that? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh four, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Carries unanimously. Next up, and, and we'll take these separately, but they're, they're related, uh, twenty-three dash oh four one, which is the, uh, Douglas County Agreement for Inmate Services. Kevin?
Thank you, ma'am. Like we spoke at the, uh, work session, this is just an agreement with Douglas County. Right now we are. Um, my officers take our misdemeanor arrest in Douglas County. For several reasons, one is the convenience of it, rather than going downtown to Rice Street. And like I said earlier. Fulton County is not even taking misdemeanor arrests right now, anyway. Um, the cost. For using Douglas County is then added to their fine when they come to court, so it's net neutral to the city.
Right. Well, this is just one of those things that we have to have to get that stuff done.
Right.
Um, can I get emotions that, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh four one?
Make a motion that we adopt twenty-three dash oh four one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh four one, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that's the, uh, IGA for the provision of the services. And then part of how we're paying for that is this next one, which is twenty-three dash oh four two. Kevin, quickly describe that for us.
That's just a ten percent increase on all our fines and forfeit, uh, which will go to Douglas County for this, this, um. Agreement. Again, it's, it's added to the fines of those that are coming into court, so there's no cost to the city.
Right, it's just a pass through, but that's how they're. Willing to continue providing the service for us. So can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh four two?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-three dash zero four two. Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the surcharge on our fines and forfeitures. All those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh four two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Last item tonight is twenty-three dash oh four three, which is an approval of our amended position control. Uh, Robbie?
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, position control. It's one of those government things we talked about during the work session that controls. You guys set in place the minimum and the midpoint and the maximum of, of, you know, what I can hire somebody. Would I like to pay Daryl three hundred thousand dollars a year? Sure. But.
Yep, you turn it around.
But, but position control is very limited. It's a limiting factor. So when we hire folks, you know, it, it kind of puts a minimum and a midpoint and a maximum. You know, like Greg's, uh, Chief Brett is a good example in his department. You know, he has someone come in there as a paramedic with twenty years of experience. He's not gonna hire him at the minimum. You know, he's gonna hire based on experience. He's had, he's gotta be able to have that latitude to go up to a maximum. Well, over the years, we've had. Colas and merit increases and such, and our position control is now outdated. So. People that have maxed out technically, if they go above that, we have to write them a check for an increase because we can't give, we can't pay them more than. So we're just trying to. Just remedy that and fix that right now. And then, as I mentioned in our work session, take care of that, move the maximums up. That, that go just, just above, a little bit more than just above, but in most cases of what we pay people now, like let's say a fire captain or something like that. And, uh, that amount is X and we wanna increase it about five, six, seven thousand more than that. So that way, that person doesn't top out anytime soon. That's part of it. The other part is, we've talked about, um, and, and Greg touched on it earlier, and I'm glad he did, um, for leadership. Uh, because we have leadership. Levels. We got leadership underneath leadership and, and they serve in a great capacity of when leaders aren't here. You know, and, and again, Chief Brett talked about it when Battalion Chief McCarter. So we wanna add a deputy fire chief position. Not saying that, you know, battalion chief, that's up to Greg, who becomes the deputy fire chief. But it's always good to have a backup if Chief Brett is not available. Same with public works. We know that, that Daryl is doing a lot more than just public works and parks and rec. He's out there, project management, dealing with developments and event permits stuff. So he's got a person that he is. Training and preparing to take on the duties that he does, so he can do those other things. And that person may qualify to be a deputy public works director. We don't have that position, position control. So in order for me to make that person or for Daryl to offer that position to somebody, we have to have it in this document. And the third one is that we've been talking about that we want is to beef up our planning department with not only another planner. But also another planner that has an economic development director background, so we can deal with. A lot of the projects that we got, not going out seeking stuff, but interacting with these folks that come in and helping them shepherd them through the process. Take a little bit of load off, off the community development, but also helping in that area. So. Economic Development Director is a new, so those three positions are added to position control in addition to increasing the maximum. And that's really the change that I have to get before the council, so we can use this document going forward.
And, and a lot of these things are already occasioned in the budget as we've been going through the budget process, but our position control no longer matches what's in the budget either. So it needs to be updated for that too. Right, uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh four three, which is the amended position control?
Make a motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh four three. Second it.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion about this? If not, all those in favor of adopting the amended position control twenty-three dash oh four three, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up are mayor and council comments. Um, and I think last time I started on my right, so I will start on my left with Mr. Bettis.
Absolutely. Um. I just wanna give a shout out to the Citizens Alliance out there. For sharing all the information that y'all have over the last, uh, few months. Don't be disheartened. Keep sharing the information, keep digging. I think you're doing a great work for the city. I appreciate it. Um, and there's a lot of transparency coming out and, uh. It's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. So, uh, and I do wanna say, uh. I, I appreciate the, uh, what the, uh, police chief is doing here lately. I've noticed, uh, even though he's understaffed to. I've noticed cars up and down my road at least and other roads too. I've noticed a bigger presence. Um, and, and before, and I'm not sliding anybody before you, of course, but. But I had never seen that many cars come down my road before. So I don't know if y'all are just looking to get me on something or what. I had no idea.
Hit and run.
But, uh, but yeah, but I appreciate that. And that's, that's basically all.
Yeah, no, I wanted to just make a quick comment because we've been here a long time, but, um, although the hotel projects are going on in my district, the entire time I've been hearing about this. I have just been excited for the city as a whole. And I really feel like, um, the CBB, I didn't see anyone that's here tonight. They may have been on Zoom. But that whole process, uh, and how involved they got, and I know they spent a lot of time in, in meetings and back and forth, just trying to make sure they get it right. And that, uh, we all kind of understand how this is gonna be a benefit to the city. And I think Laurie said it better earlier too. Just saying, uh, really good comments about the benefit of historic preservation. And some things we can do because the money from property taxes is gonna go to our general fund, which gives us a lot of leeway, um, with. What we can all talk about as a council. So I'm, I'm excited about that and I hope the financing goes well and these things get started. So. Laura?
Uh, to tag onto what Camille said about that, um. It, it was an amazing thing to watch the CBB meet and discuss. I went to, um, a couple of their meetings and Rick Lenz, Lindsay, our city attorney is just amazing and you are too. But the amount of work he had to do just to get up to speed on this, this is the first time our city's done it, even though it's a common practice elsewhere. And Camille meeting with residents in Saranby and I tagged along on a few of those, um. You, you know, you just don't see it until you see it. You know how hard people are working behind the scenes. And the Nighgrins, their willingness to meet with any of the council members that wanted to, and a bunch of us wanted to. And grill them, grill them, grill them until we figured out and we had enough information, we could vote a comfortable yes. So I wanted to thank especially the Nighgrins and, and Camille for helping us with that. Um, I wanted to address a couple of things, um, for my district, for those that were not in our, uh. In our work session. Um, this charter school traffic has been addressed in a big way. Uh, during the work session, we can let you look at the Zoom, but we, uh, discussed three points. And this is. Mayor Reed working all the way at the top with state officials on some of the traffic issues, uh. That's, that's at the high end. Um, it, at the middle end, we had the city manager. Working with, uh, other people to get the traffic lights and the flashing lights. And then at the community end. You realize next year, the charter school is going to be ten years old. And, um. I think we have a challenge we can meet to engage more as a community. In this school that we all helped create. Think about it. If you weren't involved in it, I was involved in it this much, just a tiny bit, but the Nighgrins, this was. Really in your ballpark to start with. We got a charter school. If you didn't go through that process, know that if we did that, we can do anything. There are a lot of stumbling blocks. All that to say, back to the traffic problem. There are some things we can do to mitigate that first week hot mess when school starts. And I got to learn that there's something I can do. I can, um, go through training to be a school crossing guard. I'm gonna do it doggone it. I've got it on my calendar. Chief says I can do it. There's training I gotta go through to get that. Remember the little orange belts he used to wear when you, you know, he stopped like, anyway. I'm gonna do my part and, and I just wanna say one year I just went out there and sat at the corner of Cochran Mill and Rivertown with, you know, my notebook and. Took, and everyone slowed down. So it can be done. One person can make a difference. Anyway, if anyone wants to help me with that, you know, let me know and we'll get you enrolled.
Laura, I can see you yell.
The other issue that is kind of ongoing in my district is trash collection. And I wanna thank Robbie for, uh, reaching out and, and getting, um, putting an RFP out there to see what would it cost? To do citywide trash collection. And the answer is way too much. And the majority of the residents are satisfied with their tra- trash service. Um, and, and we recognize that for a very, very small minority, there's still trash issues. So for those of you who knew Malsi Trimble, who used to uh, be in charge of picking up trash around the city, I've taken that on as a new trash person. And I'm going to do some research to see um, some smaller things we can do for those individual residents. Got some ideas in mind with that. Um, also, if you get a chance to look at the work session video, the Parks Commission came with a proposal for a new trail in an RTP Real Trail Program Grant. And what was beautiful about that? The trail looked okay. But what was beautiful about that? How many people we got? I think I counted six people on the Parks Commission. Each one of them spoke on behalf of that grant. They each had a little bit of information to share. And to have a whole team of commissioners, that solid, and then that cool, it just kind of is just an awesome thing. And I know the historic commission is right on their heels. I'm not spalling their thunder for what's coming next, but we've got some awesome commissions. Um, I did want to mention that we're having a senior luncheon learn on September fifteenth as part of uh, the Chat Hills Community Outreach. That'll be here. Uh, we're trying to limit it to eighty people, just so there's wiggle room to move around. And also so we can invite some of the staff and presenters to join us for the lunch. Um, the title is Lights, Camera, Action. And we've got two presenters that are gonna talk about um, the movie industry in Chattahoochee Hills. One, how you can rent out your property um, to, you know, to for the film industry. Uh, several people have done that, including Smith Store. And it can be lucrative. So there is an interest in that. And also um, the process for uh, becoming an extra in a movie or television show. And that no way um, interferes with any of the paid actors that are on strike. So we're very respectful of that. Just wanted to let you know that. Anyway, we're looking forward to that. And I want to thank Ruby and also Camille, who's gonna help with that, for their awesome help with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Richie?
Yeah, um. And let's say thank you also. Greg, I, I hate to hear you go. Went through all that. That's a low brother. I know. Uh, my family's been through a lot lately too. So uh, hearing our prayers, you're a good man. I appreciate your service. Kevin, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate what a lot of the city's doing. Lori, Lori, you are exactly right. That's a good job they're doing on that grant in the park. Um, another thing I was excited about too was when I saw names for this new election coming up. What a blessing to see that many people interested in their city. Uh, did a great job at the citizens' community meeting. Uh, I, I find that very, you know, we should have more of those because, you know, people come out from all districts. And you find out what's kind of going on in different parts of the city. Kind of cool. Um, but anyway, uh, yeah, did a great job. I thought it was hosted very well. A lot of educational questions. It was done very right. Um, I have had a lot of people pound my phone since I've been sitting up here fourteen years asking me about candidates. You want to know about a candidate, give me a call. I know pretty much most of them. If I don't know an answer for you, I'll let you know. But uh, as I say every time an election comes, I don't tell you who to vote for from here. But I'll tell you, open the phone. So just give me a call. Thank you.
Well, good evening to everyone. Um, I want to just kind of piggyback on Laura when she was talking about the park. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but the park will also have it accessible for anyone that in a wheelchair or any other, a lot of trails, sometimes they don't have the accessible for people to take a wheelchair down or if any kind of uh, equipment that you're on. So it will allow that so that um, I like that part about that. And for the hotel motel, um, I like the math when you talk about four hundred dollars on taxes right now and over fifteen years, that would be like six thousand dollars. But the, what you showed us for a hundred and thirty meal that we would receive when we would just only receive six thousand dollars, that is great. Um, also, uh, Lori, um, since mentioned about the upcoming event, so that will be next Friday for the senior event. And we also have an Oktoberfest, which is coming October the fourteenth. Uh, registration is online. Um, this year, um, of um, our chief police is gonna be doing a barbecue competition. And uh, you want to say something about that? The barbecue competition?
A barbecue king.
Yeah, we're having a, a barbecue competition. So if you want to come out and compete against me.
That's also the judge.
No, uh, please reach out to me, email me. I need, you know, competitors and judges. So if you want to be a judge, let me know. I'll, I'll give you a a brief rundown. What I'm doing is I'm following the KCBB barbecue competition, the official. And I'm serious about that. But uh, anyway, uh, please reach out to me. Um, we need judges and competitors and I just be a good time, you know, come enjoy, eat some barbecue. You know, maybe even uh, we'll put the dogs game on. I'm sure they're playing that weekend. We put that on or something. That's
We're gonna need to go up.
Yeah. There we go. We'll put the dog's game on.
All right. Thank you. And so that's October the fourteenth. Um, application, you can get an application. Uh, we have it online. Uh, you can go to the website, uh, Community Outreach and get the information for that event. Um, I just want to say thanks to the staff, all the work that you do, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
So I brag on the staff in, in most meetings. I'm gonna, I'm gonna forego that today and, and brag a little bit on our commissions. You know, uh, ten years ago, nine years ago, I guess, we got an RTP grant for uh, replacing the bridge in Cockermill Park. And I don't know if you've been down there and seen that beautiful old historic bridge that we did not want to tear down, that we put a nice little pedestrian bridge through the middle of. And that beautiful historic bridge is still there. And we won a national award for that. And uh, fondly remember going up to pick that up in DC with Diana and a couple of other Parks Commission members. We've been talking for years and years about the fact that we don't have a place where folks that are mobility challenged in any way can enjoy our parks. And they've laid out this beautiful plan for the Riverside Park, uh, the New Riverlands Park that is basically a single grade plan that winds through the whole park just at one level by twisting around on the grade. And if anybody can get that granted, it's Diana Wilson and that Parks Commission. And I just really want to say how much I appreciate the effort that I know is going and will go into that. I also want to call out a particular person on the CBB because the CBB did spend a lot of time working on uh, the uh, the application for the, the hotel incentive thing. And in particular, you know, we, we talk about who goes on to these commissions. Uh, we have somebody that has moved to the community that used to work for uh, one of the large casino chains in Las Vegas and has background familiarity with this kind of work. And Clarice Strong, who was that person, did a lot of work, talked to people who have done these kind of processes and fed that back into the CBB group. And they had robust conversations around this and that all led to their recommendation too, that we move forward with this. And, and again, the level of uh, uh, work that goes into that is just impressive to me, always impressive to me. Kevin, I am gonna pick on you for a second. Um, I love how responsive you are to this group and to, to things that you see going on. And so really pleased to have you in that chair. And uh, thank you for stepping up to it so well. Um, really, really good. And the last thing is just this, you know, nine eleven coming up and I'm not gonna go on like I sometimes do, but the two things I want to, I guess, comment on. One is just this reminder that I like to make. You know, we, we all, at least I do, have steered into our mind that image of firefighters running up those stairs. Everybody was streaming out of those buildings right before they collapsed, right? The people that are running toward the thing that everybody else is running away from. And our city uh, staff is more than half public safety. And that's the people that run toward the thing that everybody else needs help for, right? And we have some of the best in the region working here in this little city. And I'm always awed by those people. And nine eleven is just one of those opportunities to remember that and to be thoughtful about those people that are in our midst that are those guys, right? Those women that will run to the thing that we are trying to get away from. And the level of thoughtfulness that goes into preparing for those events in this town, I would match up against anybody. So I want to thank you guys. I want you to thank your folks. And particularly on the eleventh, I want everybody to spend a minute thinking about that because it's one of those moments. It's also a moment where the country came together. And that seems like an awfully long time ago, right? And politics are divisive. They're divisive everywhere. But you know, as we're going through that here, I just want everybody to remember that there are things more important. Right? Coming together as a community is hugely important. And please put the community first as we're thinking about all this stuff too. Thanks for coming out. Can I get a motion uh, to adjourn, please? Motion in a second to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
We have motion in a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven twenty-four PM. We always end our meetings with a town hall session. Which is a time, if you've got a question that you want to ask, it isn't something that was brought up else. How you can do that? If you don't, staff is all here. Everybody will stay until anybody that needs something is done. And seeing no takers. Everybody have a great, great weekend and we'll see you next month.
Michelle. I think that's Camille.